Great. Well, good morning, everybody. I am pleased to call to order the November 18th, 2021 meeting of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners. Note the presence of all three commissioners. And I'm going to invite Elise Rivera to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
(inaudible)
Thank you. That's the little test we do here to make sure everyone's paying attention. Welcome. Look forward to talking with you later. All right, so a couple of opening comments from me. I will begin with a quick COVID update. We do continue to see a high number of cases in the county, particularly in individuals who are unvaccinated. But this is playing out in our numbers for the first time in about a month. We did see increases in all three of our main COVID-19 indicators. Our total seven-day average rose to 148.7 cases. Our total fourteen daily average hit 130.9. And finally, our fourteen-day positivity rate came in at 5.83%, which is an increase of .52% from where it stood the previous week. We do expect some of this to happen as the weather gets colder and people move inside. I'm sure many of you remember, a year ago at this time, we were seeing a really significant and steady increase in cases. So all our cases are up. I don't think we'll see what we saw last winter, simply because I'm very happy to share that our vaccination numbers continue to be very, very robust. Just last week, more than 17,000 residents received their first dose of COVID-19 vaccine. And we estimate, we don't have the age breakdown just yet, but we estimate that the vast majority of those 17,000 were children between the ages of five and 11. And that is reflected in the fact that, to date, 82.11% of eligible Montgomery County residents ages five and older are at least partially vaccinated against COVID-19. So this is terrific news, and I want to continue to encourage everyone to get vaccinated. Our county vaccination clinics continue to administer the Pfizer vaccine to children ages five to 11. And pediatric appointments are available on our website at moncopa.org/covid-19vaccine. We do require appointments for this age group, the five-to-11 age group, and children must be accompanied by an adult when they come to the clinic. Our four vaccine clinics are open five days a week with varying hours to try to make it as convenient as possible for you and your family members to stop by and get vaccinated. Again, there's no cost. You do not need a doctor's order. We are offering the first, the second, the third, or booster, depending on which category you fall into, of the COVID-19 vaccine for everyone. In addition, all of our COVID-19 clinics have the flu shot. And you can get the flu shot at the same time that you're getting your COVID-19 vaccine, if you wish. So those are there, they're together, and you can do them both in one stop. Lastly, just a reminder that if you think you're having symptoms of COVID, no cost, no doctor's order required, COVID-19 testing remains available at our sites across the county. We encourage anyone who needs or wants to get tested to do so. It doesn't cost you anything. And again, just finally, please consider getting vaccinated. We've been conducting town halls here at the county with a number of trusted advisors and messengers across different communities. And those town halls are available on the county's YouTube channel. So it is a place to get reliable information about the COVID-19 vaccine for children ages five to 11. Now, on to Hurricane Ida, which remains a presence in our community. The county continues to provide support to those who have been displaced by Ida. And we remind anyone who has unmet needs, no matter large or small, to call 211 or visit our website at www.moncopa.org/ida for more information and to complete a needs assessment. Fortunately, the federal government has recently extended the deadlines for Hurricane Ida financial assistance applications in response to a request from Governor Wolf. Individuals and households can apply for FEMA individual assistance until Friday, December the 10th. So individual assistance, Friday, December the 10th. While local governments and nonprofits have until Tuesday, December the 7th, to apply for FEMA public assistance. In addition, businesses, nonprofits, homeowners, and renters may apply for low-interest disaster loans from the United States Small Business Administration until Tuesday, December 7th. While the Disaster Recovery Center at the Montgomery County Community College has closed permanently, applications are still accepted online or over the phone, as well as at one of the mobile disaster recovery centers, which may be scheduled over the next three weeks, depending upon demand. For those of you in the Upper Providence area, a mobile disaster recovery center is open today, Thursday, November 18th, until 6:00 p.m. at the Black Rock Volunteer Fire Company, located at 260 Green Tree Road in Oaks. Again, that's today until 6:00, at the Black Rock Volunteer Fire Company, 260 Green Tree Road in Oaks. Over $9.2 million in federal aid has been distributed to Montgomery County residents so far. If you sustained damage during the storm and have not yet applied, be sure to do so as soon as possible. And again, application instructions and information on other services available are at moncopa.org/ida. And then finally, I want to end with some really positive news. This past October, the Montgomery County Youth Center completed its annual DHS licensing, audit, and inspection. Following the exit interview, the youth center was found to be fully compliant with all of the regulatory requirements, with no corrective actions needed. The auditor was very impressed with the operation, and the inspection went smoothly. I'm proud to be able to share this great news and want to send a special thanks to Executive Director Joseph Beatty and all of the youth center staff. Congratulations. And now, turn over to Commissioner Lawrence.
All right, thank you. Good morning, everyone. I want to acknowledge that this week is Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week, November 13th through the 21st, which is a time when citizens and organizations come together to draw attention to the continuing and rising problems of hunger and homelessness in our society. You know, even here in Montgomery County, which is viewed as a county of great wealth, we have citizens here who face both homelessness and hunger and food insecurity. So I want to discuss two great organizations that we partner with here in the county, who are always there to help year-round to house and feed people, and to work with legislators in the community to provide new systems and solutions. The Montgomery County Anti-Hunger Network and Your Way Home. The Montgomery County Anti-Hunger Network has a Build Back Better Emergency Food System program, which is a collaborative effort with other food organizations to keep our residents with enough to eat. While most of us probably struggle to finish what's on our plate, little less than 10% of our residents struggle to find enough food to eat on a daily basis. And we believe that that number rose during the pandemic. Our food pantries have always been there to help, and they were literally on the front line during the COVID pandemic, dealing with the extraordinary rise in need, but also dealing with the loss of volunteers and the lack of supplies. But they remained open throughout. We know that this is difficult work all the time, and it is very much appreciated. And we also know that the holidays can be an especially hard time for individuals and families in need, since food is normally at the center of our celebrations. So please consider helping or donating or volunteering with MON by visiting their website Your Way Home is a public-private partnership that serves as the emergency response system to housing and homelessness, and also provides prevention programs such as the Rent and Utility Relief Assistance and Eviction Prevention Programs. Since 2014, Your Way Home has exited 3,755 households from homelessness to housing, and has prevented homelessness for thousands more. And I'd like to acknowledge our hotel partners, too, who have been working alongside us in these efforts, and especially through COVID and in the aftermath of Hurricane Ida. As the nationwide affordable housing crisis continues to grow, and as we work towards a solution, Your Way Home would appreciate your support. To donate or volunteer, please visit their website at www.yourwayhome.org and select Partners, then Continuum of Care from the dot menu. They're always looking for residents who have lived experience, Monco historical information, and business insight to join their action teams. You can also contact our community relations manager, Kyle Tribble, for more information via email at ktribble@moncopa.org. And November 20th is National Adoption Day. As a father, I know that giving a child a home, a family to love, and a safe place to grow up is one of life's greatest gifts. In the past, the commissioners have had the honor of participating in the Orphans Court Judge Lois Murphy's annual adoption event in Orphans Court, but that has been canceled this year due to COVID concerns. But I do want to share that the Orphans Court has finalized 137 adoptions this year so far, including 29 of which children involved in the Office of Children and Youth cases. So to the generous families who are opening their homes to some of the hundreds in Montgomery County, foster children waiting for forever families, we want to say thank you and congratulations, and we wish you the best on loving and growing together. And I urge anyone who is interested in committing to a child in need, either through fostering or adopting, to please call in our Office of Children and Youth, or visit their website They have a wonderful compassionate staff who will help guide you through the process.
All right. Then we will move on to public comment on matters appearing on today's agenda. Have anybody who's here for that?
We do have a couple folks here for public comment. And again, I'll just remind anyone who is logged in via Zoom to use the Raise Your Hand feature to indicate that you would like to provide public comment.
And I'm going to have Mr. Stein read the rules first, but just a reminder, we have public comment for matters in today's agenda, and then we have general public comment to follow. So if you could just stand at the appropriate time. Mr. Stein?
All speakers who are physically present should sign into the meeting on the sheet available in the back of the room. Speakers should come to the podium if they are physically able. Speakers should identify themselves by name and municipality. All public comments must be relevant or germane to county business. Under the law, this means that the subject matter of all comments must be limited to items or issues which are currently before the commissioners for consideration, or which may come before the commissioners for consideration at a future meeting. Whether a matter is germane to county business is a determination to be made by the county solicitor. Profane, slanderous, or discriminatory language or comments will not be tolerated in accordance with the county's nondiscrimination policy. A time limit of two minutes will be monitored, and county staff will respectfully request speakers to conclude their comments if the speaker goes beyond the time allotted. The board is not required to respond to public comments during the course of the meeting, so the public is reminded this is not an opportunity for dialogue or questions and answers. The board chair may direct appropriate county staff to follow up on any questions or additional comments after the meeting. Disruptive behavior, including, but not limited to, yelling from the seats, arguing whether matters germane to county business once the solicitor has made a determination on such, refusing to yield the floor once time has elapsed and being requested to sit down, or otherwise attempting to disrupt the meeting in any way, shall be grounds for removal from the meeting or muting without further admonishment or warning. As always, the commissioners welcome written correspondence, comments, and feedbacks to commissioners at moncopa.org.
Thank you, Mr. Stein. All right. Public comment on matters appearing on today's agenda. Sir?
Just ask if you would speak into this mic here?
Yeah. Good morning.
Good morning. Can I take this for clarity, or would you?
We can hear you just fine.
I'm sorry.
We can hear you just fine.
Oh, okay. Commissioners, my name is Barry Miller. I'm a former county employee, and I am a retiree from there. If I may, I'm here on behalf of several former Montgomery County employees who are retired and receiving county pensions.
Mr. Miller?
I'm sorry.
Mr. Miller, yes, I just want to ask you, so I think you can appreciate that we are required to limit the items here to issues that come before the commissioners. The issue that you are raising is actually an issue for the Retirement Board, which consists of the commissioners, as well as the Controller and the Treasurer. So I would ask that you limit comments to just the matters for the commissioners, and if there's any comments for Retirement Board, direct those to them.
This is on the agenda. All they're asking is that you put a cost of living increase on the pensions. One has not been granted in many years. Cost of living has gone up drastically. Social Security federally has increased by over 5%. And they're asking that you put a call in for the 2022 year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. All right. Any other comments? Absolutely, yes. Yes. Sir? Go right ahead. Good morning.
We just asked that you speak into the microphone, please.
Anthony Carleo, Will Grove, PA. This morning, in your opening address, you spoke of the clinics for the vaccinations for the children that is in our county. The only thing I would like to read into the record is from a fact sheet from the Pfizer list that would be given to a parent if they were to take their child to the clinic. In the fourth line of the question, "Has this vaccine been used before?" In this fact sheet, on the fourth line, reading that bold statement in their fact sheet, it reads, "The vaccine that is authorized for use in children five through 11 years of age includes the same mRNA and lipids, but different inactive ingredients compared to the vaccine that has been used under EAU in individuals 12 years of age and older, and that has been studied in clinical trials." If the vaccine that is being given to children today is the vaccine from this fact sheet, this fourth line in statement reads that that vaccine has not been used in clinical trials. I have posed this question to many doctors, to politicians, to everyone, and I understand from the solicitor, this is not for dialogue. It's just that I'd like to make that statement and maybe get that answer at another time after the meeting or something, how it's read.
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir. Your time is currently up.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Carleo, as long as you sign in, we have your email?
I don't have email, ma'am. That's why I came in person.
Okay. Well, whatever the best way to contact you is, if you could just give us an address and a phone number, and we can have someone from the Office of Public Health follow up with you to get you that answer.
The Offices of Public Health?
The Montgomery County Office of Public Health.
Are they in this building, ma'am?
They are not in this building. They're in a different building.
Okay.
But we can have a doctor from the Office of Public Health follow up with you to answer that question for you, get you the facts.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome. Just make sure we know how to contact you, okay?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Thank you. All right. Any other public comment on matters appearing on the agenda? Anybody online? No? Okay. Any general public comments? Yes. 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 There you go. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Peter Abeeb. I'm from the Upper Gwinnett Township. I came here today to find out more about what's going on with our election results. So far, they don't seem to be certified. Everything that's on the website is unofficial, and it's been 16 days since we've had elections. This area has been known as a cradle of liberty, and it's pathetic that we don't know the results of our elections 16 days past time. I mean, it's the practices and procedures to understand what's been done with mail-in ballots seems very lacking. And it's a shame on all of you, you didn't have the practices and procedures in place to know what to do with the mail-in ballots. When I was working at an election poll, we knew how many people were given a mail-in ballot. So you guys all knew how many mail-in ballots were supplied to people. But it seemed like you didn't have any practices and procedures in place to make sure they were counted and noted in time for us to know who our elected officials are 16 days post-election. So I'm very disappointed in all of you for doing that. And just wondering, what are we going to do going forward with this? If this had been a big election for a president, I don't want Montgomery County to be known as a Broward County with hanging chads, because we can't put the practices and procedures in place that need to be. On Election Day at the polling places, we knew, and it was printed out, what the results were for that site. We still don't know what the exact rate was for all of the mail-in ballots. And I'd like to get an answer at some point, please. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any other general public comments?
We do have one person via Zoom with their hand raised. Okay. We will, Charles Shag, you are now unmuted. You just need to unmute yourself. You can go ahead, sir. If you're talking, we are not able to hear you.
Is the volume?
Yeah, the volume is fully.
I have a question for Commissioner Lawrence. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. And I have a comment afterward. Commissioner Lawrence, did you receive my email of November 5th regarding your visit to Pensburg Borough?
No, I have not.
Okay. And the question I have for you is, I would like to ask any or all commissioners, if they would like to visit Pensburg Borough to see the Route 29 bridge situation and to hear our explanation of why it should be removed. Do you have any comments for me? Did you hear my question?
Sir, just to remind you, this is not an opportunity for questions and answers. If you have public comment, you are welcome to make those comments, but we can follow up certainly afterwards on any questions you have.
Okay, it looks like he disconnected. We don't have anyone else on virtual for public comment.
All right. Thank you. Then we will move on to approval of the minutes. I will move to approve the November 4th, 2021 minutes of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any board comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. All right. Next, we are going to recognize one of our 911 telecommunicators. And let's see, who's giving? Kate Burfett?
Are you doing it? Or Todd? I'm not sure who's doing it.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you so much for having us here this morning. So on the morning of October 27th, at 6:41 in the morning, our 911 telecommunicator, Elise Rivera, was just a few minutes away from the end of her night shift and at the Department of Public Safety's Emergency Communication Center. So over the previous 12 hours, she had literally answered dozens of calls for service from the public, and providing them essential instructions and ensuring that our police officers, our emergency personnel, our fire department were all sent to the correct locations. And little did she know that this phone call, her very last phone call the morning, would be by far the most rewarding. So she, that morning, local resident Charlotte Fatoma was driving through Montgomery County when she went into labor. She realized she needed immediate help, and knowing that she was alone in the vehicle, Charlotte called 911. And at that time, she was traveling south on I-476, and Elise answered her call. So Charlotte was unsure of her location, and she was still traveling at highway speeds. And Elise and other members of the staff of the Emergency Communications Center worked with her, using her cell phone GPS and the information that Charlotte could provide us to determine what her exact location was. And as it became clear that she was not going to make it to the hospital in time, Elise instructed her to find a safe place to pull over and provided her with instructions on how to make it through this incredibly stressful experience. So Elise was calm and supportive to Charlotte throughout the entire thing. She provided Charlotte with instructions so that she could successfully deliver her own baby on the side of the highway. And fortunately, paramedics arrived shortly afterwards and transported Charlotte and her brand-new baby girl to the hospital. But thanks to Elise's efforts and assistance, both are doing well. So today, here with you, we would like to present Elise with her stork pin.
Great. Well, thank you, Elise. So Kate, tell us about the pin, what the pin means.
So the pin is given to each of our telecommunicators that assist with delivering of a baby on the phone. So if we're, if we assist before paramedics, police, fire would arrive, our telecommunicators each receive a pin. And based on whether it's a little baby girl or a baby boy determines the color of the sash for the baby.
Love it.
Kate, how often does that happen? How many pins do you?
Believe it or not, we do get quite a few, but not as many on the side of the highway by themselves. So, and with Elise being newly certified, this is definitely a way to start her career with us at the Emergency Communications Center, so.
Wow. Well, thank you. So Elise, how long have you been a telecommunicator?
So I started off March 29th, 2021, and I began my training in July. And I recently became certified September 23rd, so, yeah.
Oh, you jumped in with both feet. That's really fantastic. And as a doctor, I can tell you, what you did was not easy. So do you want to tell us a little bit about it?
Sure. So I was the last one to get relieved, and I received a phone call. And at first, I thought she was in an accident, because that's normally the calls we get on the highway. And she was hysterical. You know, I was telling her, you know, take a deep breath, tell me what's going on. And she was like, "I'm in labor. I'm driving to the hospital." And I told her, "You need to pull over. You know, it's a dangerous situation. You have to pull over. Can you tell me where you are, where you're at?" So she told me she was on I-76, and that's where her GPS was putting her at. But I guess she exited so she can pull over, because, you know, I was telling her to pull over. And the ambulances, and they could not find her. They could not find her. And she was, she thought she was dying. You know, she's like, "I feel like I'm dying. I'm tired," you know? And I instructed her, you know, to take a deep breath, to try to be as calm as possible, because whatever she's feeling, her baby's going to feel as well. And I'm a mother of two, so I understand what she's going through. And it gave me flashbacks, because I was in labor with my three-year-old while driving. So I was like, "Okay."
But you were the perfect person to take this call.
Yeah. So I told her to, you know, undress from the waist down, and I gave her the instructions. And that's when everything just went left. She's like, "Oh," she's like, "I feel like I have to use the bathroom." And I was like, "Oh, that's the pressure of the baby's head." And then, you know, she's like, "Where are they?" And I was like, "They're trying to find you. I'm here with you. I'm not going anywhere. I'm here with you. I'm going to take care of you, make sure everything is okay." And a few minutes later, she said, "I feel the head." So that's when I said, "This baby is coming." And I instructed her the instructions, you know, that they teach us. And I heard the baby cry, and that was an amazing moment. It made me emotional hearing the baby cry. I'm sensitive when it comes to babies. And when I heard the baby's cry, I was like, "Congratulations on your baby girl." I had to lift my mic up. I didn't want to hear her, you know, her to hear me. And they found her moments after the baby was born. So it was an amazing experience for me.
Well, thank you so much. And a way to keep calm and cool when someone really needed you to do that. And it's so great that you could kind of understand what she was going through, too. So, thank you. That's really fantastic.
Thank you.
That's an amazing story. I think I saw it on NBC 10. Is that?
Yeah.
It's all there. So it's great to see you here. Thank you for that.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Incredible work.
Thanks for having me.
Yes, Elise, that's a true and incredible story. And we're so proud of you and all your efforts. And I know the position that you hold can be very stressful every time you take a call. It's not pleasant, there's an emergency. And I admire what you and all your colleagues do at the Emergency Response Center. And just honored to have you as an employee here. Keep up the great work.
Thank you.
And we understand that you're going to get some national attention on this story. That's kind of exciting. You want to tell us about that?
Yeah, so The Today Show wants to interview me. They want to do like a holiday special, happy moment. I also made it on Instagram. My story has spread. So it just means a lot to me because I struggled during my training, and I wanted to quit so many times. But, you know, everyone told me to keep pushing forward. My husband told me, I don't tag you for a quitter. So, you know, I'm on board for whatever you want to do. But if you really want to quit, because as long as I've known you and been with you, you're not a quitter. And my trainer pushed me hard, so it was just me, just in my own head. And a week before I tested out, everything started clicking to me. And I was like, oh, I really love what I do. And I honestly love what I do, so.
That's so great. It's a hard job.
It is.
And I'm glad you stuck with it because we need people like you.
Yeah.
And have you had a chance to meet the mom in person?
No, we chatted over FaceTime.
Oh, that's nice.
And I got to see the baby.
So you got to see the baby?
Yeah, got to see the baby.
Yeah, oh, that's fantastic.
Thank you.
Well, congratulations. And again, thank you so much for your professionalism and your calmness and your courage in that moment. And, you know, I really appreciate your sharing that it was emotional for you too. Because guess what? It would have been emotional for anybody. That is just a normal thing. And I really support and am glad that you were willing to share that with us so that everybody understands these are tough jobs and they are emotional jobs.
Yes.
And it is exactly the right thing to do to share that. And so, because you've got a lot of people here who are going to always support you in that.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Thanks for having me.
That's great. All right, thank you. So next, we have Dr. Victoria Vosteki Perez, the President of Montgomery County Community College, to give us the annual update.
Thank you Chair Akoush, Vice Chair Lawrence, Vice Commissioner Gale. I appreciate the opportunity to provide Montgomery County residents with an update from Montgomery County Community College. For more than a half a century, we have evolved, continuing to teach and lead the community college at all its different stages in life. Today with me, I'm proud to have two members of the Montco family, Frank Huster, the Chair of the Board of Trustees, and Mike Bettenger, the Director of Government and External Relations. I appreciate and value our partnership to ensure an inclusive economic development for Montgomery County and social mobility for all. Next slide, please. In 1920, I shared with our residents the year of the long week where the college was focused on the opportunity to ensure that everyone had a voice, and most importantly, that the voice was heard. This update is our year of learning update through the pandemic. It was apropos that we had significant learnings out of our students, that our employees, that our communities at large, as well as for our partnership. And this current year that we're in is our year of almon as we begin together building our future to continue to be successful and meaningful for those who serve. We are using an asset-focused lens approach. And in 2021, we had our statement of how to be effective to ensure that sense of belonging and empathy for all that we serve. The college stands ready to serve and meet our students and our communities where they are. We value the authentic, fluid partnerships that we have not only with the county, but with business and industry, our school district, and all of the residents of this county. We were fortunate because going through the pandemic that we've worked collectively, strategically, and intentionally to ensure that not only were we providing educational opportunities, but we were part of a health solution, a social solution, and an economic solution. And we know that we were stronger together to mobilize for success. Next slide, please. We had Pottstown Campus redesign that we're continuing to go through. We were fortunate to be the first in the entire Commonwealth of Pennsylvania to secure a Challenger Learning Center in 2021 that we are building a space simulator on our Pottstown campus to be able to inspire youth to pursue not only higher education, but also as an equity solution to have talented minds be part of science, technology, engineering, and mathematics, helping to secure jobs for the future. We also have a green space project going on and a campus trail project connecting the college more deeply to the assets in the community, including the businesses, the Scoopville River, the Manitani, as well as making a safe pathway for all services in that area. We're also doing some significant renovations and have support from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, not only for our capital campaign, we're building renovations, but also we received a half a million dollars in PA Smart Grant to help support the Challenger Learning Center. We have new programming to help, again, respond to business and industry and to get family living wage jobs to our tri-state area. We brought tourism and hospitality management, sound recording and music technology, as well as computer numerical control technician, as well as new partnerships with our apprentice program. We have new apprentice models that are being replicated by other businesses. I'm particularly proud to share two of those with you. With the support of Commissioner Lawrence, we were able to secure and recently celebrate our partnership in the apprentice area with Aon Services Corporation, where a cohort of eight students at Montgomery County Community College will complete their associate degree program while simultaneously being employed at Aon full-time with a salary, benefits, and full tuition and fees being paid, as well as books through Aon Corporation. This is a work-to-learn model that we're very proud of. The second program that we're proud to have launched with our educational partnerships is with Karnataka and India, where we recently celebrated, again, a government partnership bringing new business, educational opportunities, and a multicultural educational experience for our students at Montgomery County Community College. We are in the process of educating students in our hospitality management program from Karnataka and India. These students have 100% of their tuition fees paid and will be able to enrich the learning experience for all. Next slide, please. Some of the impacts that you'll see in our annual report that I'm proud of for this year 2020 is the additional tax revenue to Montgomery County of $97.3 million through Montgomery County Community College. Our students, for every dollar they invest in their education at Montco, has a $4.30 return on investment, which equates to almost 18%. We have nearly a half a billion-dollar impact to the county and the businesses that we serve and support over 6,000 jobs in Montgomery County. I'm also particularly proud of the $1.1 billion net present value of higher earnings, increased business output, and social savings by Montco students. Next slide, please. I'm proud to share with you the Hospitality Institute that will be moving to our Blue Valley campus in spring of 2023. We are renovating our former college bookstore and moving our culinary institute from Tower Mason to our Blue Valley campus and expanding the footprint to a 20,000-plus square foot facility, where we'll not only have culinary, baking and pastry, and hospitality and tourism, but are expanding to beverage management, fermentation science, nutrition science, among others. In this state-of-the-art facility, we will have live learning labs, including a restaurant, where students will gain, again, work experience through their education while serving our college community, as well as the greater community. There'll be workforce opportunities, economic development catalysts, as well as community engagement through that hospitality institution. Next slide, please. I'm going to share one of the renderings of this renovation project. There, as I said, are learning labs, not only inside, the way that we've got our programming, our restaurant. We'll have a small bakery, as well as chocolate area, pasta area, et cetera. We'll also have well-appointed exterior live learning labs through herb gardens, composting, rainwater collection, a small orchard, and hopefully, in time, beehives. Next slide. And this is just a glimpse, the interior engagement space of the facility. And finally, next slide. I'd like to share with you another exciting project, which is a closeout of our 2012-2022 Facilities Master Plan with field improvements. We will be reconstructing our baseball fields and our softball fields at our Blue Valley campus, as well as installing three multipurpose sports fields with features, a walking and bike path, team rooms, equipment storage, improved audiovisual capabilities, restroom and toileting facilities, as well as advanced parking. I do want to give a shout out to one of our other partners, the Valley Forge Tourism Convention Board, and Mike Bowman for his team's support in helping the college with our Challenger Center with the Hospitality Institute, as well as with these field improvements. Last slide, please, Mike. Again, I want to thank the commissioners, Akoush, Lawrence, and Gale for the opportunity of briefly sharing some of our successes, both short and long-term, at Montgomery County Community College and connecting and serving as a true, authentic partner with us. I also encourage everyone to sign up for my monthly President's Report at mc3.edu/president, as well as to focus and sign up for our social media so that you can be part of the Montco family, knowing what we're offering, what activities that we have coming up, lectures, engagement opportunities. We'll be opening a theater in 2022. So again, thank you for helping us spread the word about Montgomery County Community College. We are truly the community's college and look forward to continuing to work with you collaboratively. Thank you.
Oh, Dr. Vosteki Perez, thank you so much. I always look forward to this annual update and the hearing the latest about the important role that the Community College plays here in Montgomery County. It is just so inspiring to hear all the work that you are doing to support our business community, in particular, to make sure that they have the workforce of the future that they need to want to locate their business here in the county and to grow and thrive if their business is already here. And the new renovations look great. I look forward to coming and having a meal when that is all open. And I'm also particularly excited about the Challenger Learning Center. This is an opportunity to get our youngest children excited about science and technology. There are very few of these Challenger Learning Centers in the United States. And we are so honored and fortunate to get one here in Montgomery County and to help to build that STEM workforce of the future. So congratulations for all of that, and we look forward to continuing to partner closely with you going forward.
Dr. Vosteki Perez, thank you for the very comprehensive report, and thank you for your leadership. You took on the presidency, the leadership of the college, at a difficult time, but you have kept things moving along. I'm also very excited about the Hospitality Institute. And I just want to thank the college for always being a partner with the county, whether it was during the pandemic, or for elections, or for Hurricane Ida relief. The college always steps up whenever we call upon you, so I thank you for that.
Dr. Vosteki Perez, I'd also like to thank you for this informative update and also your monthly updates. I read those each month, and I find them very informative. And I'm glad you promoted that for others to enroll with. I encourage people to sign up for those updates. And I wish you continued success through the rest of 2021. And it looks like there's a bright future in 2022. Thank you.
Thank you, all.
Thank you. All right, next, we will hear a presentation about a new program, Mako Mamas. Janet Panning.
Good morning, Janet. No, Akoush. It's my pleasure to introduce Tasha Blaylock, Senior Program Director from the Maternity Care Coalition and founding member of our Montgomery County Maternal and Early Childhood Consortium. Tasha will share with us an update from one of our consortium initiatives, Mako Mamas, which is working to reduce disparities in birth outcomes in Montgomery County. Thank you, Tasha.
I believe I have slides, but I'll start talking as they are getting ready. Thank you again, Janet, and thank you commissioners for having us and for your time and attention to this matter. The Montgomery County Maternal and Early Childhood Consortium, a group of dedicated professionals from Montgomery County Human Services Departments and nonprofit maternal, family, and early childhood service providers, including my organization, Maternity Care Coalition, collected data to better understand the infant mortality crisis in Montgomery County. I'm not sure if you're seeing my slides. It looks like.
Yeah, they're up now. Yep, you're good.
Awesome. If you could go to the next slide, please? Thank you. What I want you to see there is I'm describing the crisis in infant mortality in Montgomery County because as you can see on the slide, what we learned through our data collection is that Black women and their babies are significantly at risk. The county data revealed that Black infants were almost three times as likely to die as white infants in Montgomery County before they reached the age of one-year-old. Often, the primary concern is babies who are preterm and born at low birth weight. The full perinatal periods of risk report can be found on the Montgomery County PA website by searching Mako Mamas. Next slide, please. In February 2021, we brought together a group of stakeholders to review this data and to prioritize a set of recommendations on how Montgomery County can make significant improvements in the infant mortality rate for Black babies. The participants met on Zoom for six months, and they included health professionals, managed care organizations, policy advocates, and nonprofit agencies that impact the social determinants of health. But most importantly, included at the table were Black women and Black birthing people that this problem is impacting. We were privileged to have six lived experience experts at the table of 40 individuals who contributed. Next slide. These are the recommendations that were made by this committee. The first one here is we'd like to increase the use of allied health providers, including doulas, home visitors, lactation consultants, and patient advocates. And to highlight one of the many outcomes that we'd like to see, a very important one is that we'd like to have every Black pregnant woman be offered allied health provider services, including doulas. Next slide. Our second recommendation is to provide targeted education about reproductive health, overall health, and parenting, among other topics, including empowerment. And here, one of the outcomes that I'd like to highlight is we want these messages to include culturally-aligned language and so that Black women can understand how to promote successful pregnancies. Next slide. The final recommendation that we highlighted is to increase providers' understanding of Black women's experiences. I'd actually like to highlight a couple of outcomes here that we'd like to promote. The first one is that Black women and Black birthing people report that they have received respectful care. They should expect nothing less, and we want to really help to make sure that we meet that goal. And we want to do that through number four, providers and hospitals having ongoing training to help them to be able to achieve that goal. It's our intention to work on each of these goals collaboratively under the banner of the Mako Mamas Initiative. We've already submitted a proposal to HealthSpark Foundation, who funded our initial planning grant to help us move forward on identifying and funding doula. grant to help us move forward on identifying and funding doula trainings in Montgomery County, so that we can increase the number of Black patient advocates who can help support healthy pregnancies and bridge the gap with families. The Office of Public Health has generously matched that grant and has pledged to continue to support Monco Mamas initiatives. Right now, one of our primary activities is to identify additional funding sources so that we can continue to build. Next slide. I will leave you with our excitement about having some publicity and interest in what we are doing here in Montgomery County, which places us as a leader in the region working on goals around infant mortality. If you've already heard the name Monco Mamas, it may be because we were recognized with a Best Affilia Award for a rising wellness organization in the burbs. We're grateful that local media outlets have given us some early attention, but obviously we don't want to stop there. We want to continue this work until we see Black women and Black babies thriving in Montgomery County. And we firmly believe that by making these improvements, we will lift all boats. We intend to work to see all children in Montgomery County starting off their life in a way that they can thrive. Not all births will be as dramatic as the one that Elise Rivera reported and supported earlier in the conversation, but hopefully they all can be just as successful. Thank you, Dr. Arkush, Commissioner Lawrence, and Commissioner Gail for allowing us to share this with you and for members of our county. Thank you.
Ms. Blaylock, thank you so much, and Ms. Panning, thank you so much for your work on this. I don't have to tell either of you that we have known about this problem of infant mortality here in Montgomery County for many, many years. I mean, several decades, I think this data has been present, that there is a real disparity here in this county. And I am so pleased to see this very data-driven, but also community-driven response to this very real challenge. I can tell you as a physician that worked on the labor and delivery floor for years that patients are not all treated the same in the hospital and when they leave the hospital. And I think that it's critically important that we work on these very community-based solutions to make sure that new moms in particular have the supports that they need in that very important time with their newborns. So I am very, very excited to see this work progressing. I also just want to thank you because you all kept this going during the pandemic, even though it was not easy to do that, but you didn't let up. You got this done despite a lot of challenges around the pandemic, and you didn't take your foot off the gas on this, so I want to applaud you for that. So I'm looking forward to regular updates and really hope that we can change the trajectory of this data, which is data we've kind of been stuck with here for a very, very long time. And of course, the goal is to reduce infant mortality and make sure that every baby has a chance to grow and thrive. So thank you so much for that. Yeah.
Ms. Blaylock, whenever you present, I am struck by your passion for this. It just comes through, that it's just not words, it's just not numbers. So I want to thank you for that. I want to thank everyone on the Coalition for their efforts to this, and I too am looking forward to seeing when you come back with positive outcomes, because I know you're going to keep at it, and we're going to get this done. So thank you very much.
Ms. Panning, Ms. Blaylock, I too would like to thank you for this update and wish you continued success with these efforts. Thank you.
Thank you all so much.
Good to see you. Take care. All right. Mr. Do Towne, you're up with our proposed 2022 budget.
Share. Or you can use. Whatever you like for errors.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
So we are here today to walk through the 2022 proposed budget. As you know, we've been working closely with the departments throughout the summer to get to this point, very detailed meetings on, you know, operational discussions, capital discussions, so that we understand all the issues that are surrounding our organization and embedded in our budget proposals. So before I get into the numbers and the detail, I just wanted to quickly outline, you know, our process. As you know, today, once this budget is presented, it'll be distributed, posted out on the county website, made available by hard copy here in One Montgomery Plaza in the Commissioner's Office. We also provide the Norristown Library with hard copies, and, you know, anybody else out there that doesn't have access to these materials, we're happy to get it in their hands. What we have ahead of us after today, you know, there's two public hearings that are scheduled on the proposed budget and the capital plan. They're scheduled for December 2nd. Two sessions, the morning session's at 10:00 a.m., and then the evening session is at 5:30 p.m., all open to the public. And then adoption of the 2022 proposed budget and capital plan is scheduled for the last board meeting of the year on December 16th. So before I turn to the 2022 budget, I wanted to talk a little bit about 2021, and, you know, where we are and where we think our projections are leading us between now and the end of the year. And just to take a step back, you know, you see that on a budget basis, we did have a planned structural deficit of 6.7 million coming into 2021. Even with that, you know, we thought that we could possibly outperform it. Right now, the numbers that we're forecasting, you know, based on meetings that we've had and tweaking of the numbers based on actual revenues and things like that, are showing a deficit a little bit higher, about 1.5 million higher at 8.2 million. Our past experience has been that we typically outperform, you know, our forecast. I'm hopeful that'll happen here, too. We'll continue to monitor, you know, the performance on the revenue side and expense side between now and the end of the year, and I'll be updating you as we get into 2022 more about, you know, where 2021's looking, you know, in terms of final financial results. But based on these numbers and utilizing a fund balance projection for 2020, which is based on preliminary audited numbers, the audit is not complete at this moment, it's scheduled to be by the end of the year. If we had a deficit of 8.2 million, it would take our fund balance down to just over 20%. Just wanted to remind everybody, too, that, you know, since the pandemic, you know, in 2020, there had been, obviously, many funding flows that come through either from the state, you know, indirectly pass through that are federal funds or federal funds directly. So some of that's embedded, you know, in our 2020 actuals and our 2021 budget, and you're going to see some of it, you know, continuation of it into 2022. So it can make our expenses and our revenues look higher than our normal base, and, you know, in, you know, the next few years here, you know, that's going to funnel out unless there's, you know, additional funding that comes down. You know, right now, we know what the prime funding is that we're dealing with. Some of it's segregated into its own fund, like the ARPA funding, the CARES Act funding, they're major sources of funds that we track individually. So turning to the 2022 proposed budget, high level, right now, you can see that, you know, revenues are roughly about 31 million higher than the 2021 budget, and expenses are about 37 million higher. With those numbers, there's a projected deficit of $12 million in the general fund. In the revenue numbers, it does anticipate new real estate tax revenue, and again, there are cost savings in some of the service areas that I'll highlight as we go through the presentation. I think the one thing that we got to continue to remind ourselves when we talk about cost savings, because, you know, we have thousands of line items throughout, you know, our general ledger in our department, so, you know, there's small savings, there's larger savings, and there's additional costs, too, that go with it. But the one thing that we force ourselves to do is to save against the budget, and we do that by putting a negative appropriation in the budget. So in the 2021 budget, that negative appropriation was about 1.4 million. In the 2022 budget, it's about 1.9 million. You know, we base that a lot on turnover rates in the various departments, you know, the levels of vacancy, you know, what's happening, you know, in some of our fringe benefit areas like healthcare and so forth. So we have increased that in the 2022 budget based on, you know, some of the trends that are occurring right now. But I just wanted to note that because that is something that, you know, we have to achieve, right, to stay within our budget, and we, you know, that's a practice throughout this organization. You know, we tell the departments, you know, the budget is the budget, and you're not, it's not there to be spent, you know, 100%. It's there, you know, to be saved against, because when you put the budget together, you know, the numbers become old tomorrow, right? So, you know, they're just projections, and things happen. And there are things that come up that we don't anticipate that we have to deal with, but for the most part, we should be able to save against the budget, and that's what we do. That's what we, that's what we practice here in our organization. So let me just talk to you a little bit more about, you know, I just noted that we have a gap, budget gap of about 12 million. So there's a couple, a couple different tools that we have here that have been planned for, and you'll recall that back in 20, when we're closing out the preliminary numbers in 2020, because some better performance, a good part of it was CARES Act funding that helped reimburse us for some of our key areas, public safety, public health, for personnel expense during 2020 to deal with the pandemic, you know, helped us with ending fund balance. And the board, you know, made a really strong decision to take some of that one-time performance and assign it, and actually take a formal action, put it on the balance sheet, and it will be when we see the audited financial statements. But the three core areas that were approved were to put about 5 million for future pension costs in an assigned fund balance, and then there was another 20 million that was put into assigned fund balance for future debt service costs, and then another 10 for recovery, knowing that, you know, we have had a lot ahead of us and still do. So it's a total of 35 million. So the two assigned fund balances that are in the proposal ahead here that I'm going to explain are in the area pension costs and new debt service. We have about $5 million of new pension costs relating to our annual contribution, and I'll explain more about that later, but so that's over and above what we would have experienced in 2021. And then we have new debt service. We have two categories in new debt service. The normal organic growth from prior bond issues, which is, you know, roughly about 2.8, 2.9 million. Then we'll have new debt service as a result of the capital plan borrowing that we'll probably need to do next year to fund the capital plan, to restore, you know, bond proceeds and pay for those projects. Right now, that's estimated, you know, to add around 4.1 million of new debt service, somewhere in that range. I think that, you know, that's more of a conservative projection based on what we know today, as we get further into, in the year and early in the next year, we'll be doing a closer cash flow analysis of.
Things I'd like your assistance with.
And.
So.
Really what the impact will be.
This goes into our financial thing. That's still up there, right?
It's okay.
Apologies. Director Coco was unmuted.
No problem. So the budget balancing proposal, you know, contains a couple steps here, and the first two are the drawdown on the assigned fund balances, approximately 5 million and another 6.9 million, which will cover pension and debt service costs. And that, as I said, that recognizes the board's formal action to use these one-time funds that were assigned, you know, back after 2020, earlier in the year, to address some of our growing costs, you know, in the critical areas that we know of. And it also will preserve about 13 million of assigned fund balance in the future debt service cost bucket, which will be helpful in 2023 and beyond. In addition to that, you know, I mentioned that there's new real estate tax revenue embedded in the numbers, and it's approximately $18 million, and that would be from a proposal of increasing the real estate tax mileage rate by 8%, and I'll talk more about that.
I think it just gotten weird when I had it on the job.
Okay. Thank you. So just to walk through the steps, you know, about 11.9 million of unassigned fund balance that's available to us to address the $12 million budget gap. So drawing down those two buckets of fund balance would leave another $100,000 that would have to be covered by unassigned fund balance, and that would get us to the $12 million to cover the budget gap. It also will keep the ending fund balance, you know, just above our fund balance policy goal range, or almost right at the high end of 20%. So it meets the fund balance goal range, and our practices of trying to stay, you know, within the range or very close to it in our budget planning. So walking through this with the financials, you can see, number one, on the revenue side, that's adding new real estate tax revenue, so that would become our new revenue base. Number two is the drawdown of assigned fund balance. Three, same thing for pension and debt service. And then closing the gap with a, you know, very small drawdown of unassigned fund balance would leave ending fund balance at about 97.8 million. That's 20.1% of the budget of revenues, so as I said, right at the higher end of our goal range. Slightly lower than, you know, our actual ending fund balances in recent years, in terms on a percentage range, we've been closer to 21%, 22%. But, you know, it's a budget projection, and again, you know, we would be hopeful to outperform this budget, too, and do, you know, better, at least on the expenditure side. Revenue, you know, in the last, you know, 18 months has obviously been a little volatile, not just for us, but, you know, for the economy, too, just, you know, because of the pandemic and the recovery. So we're slowly coming back in certain areas, but, you know, until we're, you know, over the hurdle here with COVID-19 and, you know, get our operations running at full scale, I think we'll have a better idea where things are going. Even at the 20%, and I noted this last year, just to remind us that, you know, our fund balance is still behind the national medians for AAs, you know, that are rated by Moody's. It's typically around the 33% range. You know, we've obviously increased our fund balances in recent years, you know, due to good financial management. You know, we have a strong fund balance policy, we manage against it, but we should always remember that, you know, we are behind the medians, and, you know, it's something that Moody's is always looking at as we meet with them each year. So just giving a little bit more detail on the revenue and expense on the revenue side, you know, we're now at about 487 million, and obviously, that, as I said, that includes some grant revenue that's one time that'll go away. So, you know, I would expect that in, you know, the next several years, our revenue base will come down once those grant revenues funnel out, and the same thing will happen on the expense side as well. But that said, you know, we talk about this all the time, the general fund, you know, is made up of, you know, 50% of its revenue comes from real estate tax and real estate tax revenue, and we have very, very moderate growth, you know, in that area. Our assessment base grows, you know, roughly at a half percent a year, a little bit more, you know, that adds new net revenue in the range of a million to two. So it's not a lot on a budget of this size. Just to walk through the impact of an 8% real estate tax increase, you can see that the millages are clearly laid out. The community college mileage rate, the dedicated revenue to the community college is flat and will remain unchanged. is flat and will remain unchanged. It's been that way since it's, has been implemented in 2017. But with the proposed real estate tax increase, you can see that the average market value of a, a single-family home in Montgomery County is estimated at 381,000. That type of home would pay $667 of real estate tax revenue. That's about $49 higher than what the current tax, annual tax payment would be for a home of that size. And the real estate is important. And, you know, we, we try to monitor this closely. As I said, it, it's a large part of the general fund budget. And you can see here, this is the most recent update from the Board of Assessment through October. Our assessment growth has been good. It's at 0.81%. You know, better than it was this time last year. And, you know, I would think that there's going to be some negative adjustments by year end after we close everything out, but we're probably going to be close to this range when we, when we complete the year, which, you know, that has been the trend even through the pandemic. Home sales have been strong, you know, the, the demand for housing is strong. You can see that, again, this is the housing data updated at the end of October, median price is up again. You know, every quarter that I've reported this out, the median price has been up. So, and, and that's more the market that's driving it. There's, there's very low inventory out there and, you know, prices are really aggressive. You can see the number of home sales are up 12%, you know, compared to this time last year. And, you know, we did, even though we were coming out of, you know, the, the major part of the pandemic, real estate sales really kicked up in the summer, particularly with mortgage rates, you know, at record lows. But there, there is the, you know, the issue of low inventory. You can see the average days on the market, you know, down by 23% and inventory, which, you know, parallels it. So not much out there in the way of inventory. And, you know, that could impact, you know, some of the experience that we've had in the Recorder Deeds Office where, you know, we've realized higher revenues, record high revenues, you know, as a result of, you know, the, the spike up in, in home sales and the refinancing that, that's occurred, you know, due to the aggressive mortgage rates. This is a nice snapshot through October. It's showing, you know, most of the, the major performance measures that we, that we track, and it's comparing us to the five county region. So we're in the blue, the gray is the five county region. Everything on here is positive, including the red arrows down, you know. The inventory or under contract numbers, you know, that's, you know, that's just because there's, there's not a lot of housing out there. But everything else is still trending really good and has been consistent, you know, at least over the last four quarters. So just taking a look at some of the emerging revenue trends, budget to budget, you know, you can see clearly the real estate tax revenue up. That's directly a result of the proposed real estate tax increase. Grant revenue is up, but you'll see on the expense side, it has an offset, a partial offset in, in contracted services and provider services. I would note that, you know, one of the numbers that stands out here is the gaming revenue, which, you know, is clearly up significantly from the 2021 budget. And that's mainly based on actual performance this year, which, you know, we're seeing a trend of this revenue growing and, and probably staying in this range unless there's some kind of significant change that would, would, would change it. So we're budgeting at a higher level for that. Department fees is, is, can be masked a little bit here by, you know, there's, there's certain departments that are doing, doing good and, and, you know, have come back a bit, but there's others that haven't. So we've got some ups and downs if you looked across the organization in departmental fees. And I'm hopeful that our base will come back, you know, as we get into 2022 and, you know, things get a little more stable and operations, you know, get back to, you know, fuller scale. So we'll continue to monitor that. But we, we spoke with the row officers and, you know, we, we really, we took a first look at it in the summer and then we took a second look at it at the end of September before we started locking down our preliminary numbers to make any adjustments. But there, there were not really any major swings, you know, based on their new projections. So I think we're, you know, we're at a good place right now and we should, if things get better, we should see better performance here. And then, you know, there, there's a number of savings areas here that, you know, or reductions, I'm sorry, in some of the revenues here that, you know, some of them are one-time, like the miscellaneous revenue category. I'll note that part of that has to do with public health where we were this year engaging a consultant to help us recoup some of the costs for vaccination, COVID testing through healthcare insurance. And that'll scale out and that's primarily why you're seeing a reduction here. But there are other areas, you know, that, that have dropped for, for various reasons. I mean, you know, domestic relations, there, there's been some changes in their operation. And, you know, we typically only cover a third of their expenses because two-thirds are covered by, by the, by their revenues. But this, this is a more of a rebasing of, of domestic, domestic relations operations. You know, they're, they're down a significant number of positions over the last 18 months. You know, some of, some of the facilities that they're using here have changed a bit, which will change some of the expense and revenue allocations. The one though that stands out is the correctional facility work release program. You know, you can see that, you know, it's dropped off significantly and, and really that's primarily due to the impact of COVID-19. You know, they, they just, they're operating under a very different protocol right now. So, you know, hopefully someday that will come back and, you know, that gap will be filled. Same thing with district justice revenue, you know, that has been down, you know, for various reasons. As I said, the courts are not operating at completely 100% at the moment. So turning to expenses, you can see that overall expenses are projected at about 498 million. You know, the breakdown is very similar. There is, you know, some increases in these areas because of the grant funding, primarily, you know, Health and Human Services getting, you know, funding through the state. The one that, that I would note that I typically do is where debt service is at 11.2% of the overall budget. That's a good measure for us, one that's typically noted by Moody's, and we're still in the range that we have been in, in recent years. So again, some of the major expenditure trends, I'll just note quickly at the top, the provider services. You look at provider services, consulting services together, you know, up about 15 million. On the, on the revenue slide, you saw, you know, there was, there was a, you know, a revenue increase in grant revenue, you know, somewhere in that range. Some of that offsets each other. The personnel costs, which we're going to talk about a little bit more, includes a couple of components. You know, it's up by 5% on a budget to budget basis. But there, there are some core service areas that, you know, the county had to make, make adjustments to voter services, pre-trial services that are now fully embedded, you know, into our 2022 budget. And really the big driver of this number is the pension cost increase that I spoke about earlier. That's about 4 million of this. Debt service, we, we spoke about. So interest and principal, you know, roughly, you know, six, six point something million, 6.9, 6.8 in total. Part of that's, you know, the projected, you know, for the new bond issue. Materials and supplies is directly related. Most of that is, is directly related to public health and is covered by grant revenue. That's part of, you know, their programming for ongoing vaccination and, and dealing with COVID-19. But some of the other items here that you see, you know, software licenses. So we had to take on a, a lot of new technology when the pandemic hit. You know, the work at home model, there was a lot of things that had to be done quickly and implemented. They have been, some of them were, you know, capital items that don't necessarily show up in, in the operating budget, but then you have the recurring expenses of whatever the technology is. And we, we had quite a bit of that. So you're seeing some of that in this number and probably, you know, some new stuff too that, that, you know, I'll give you a good example, like the financial system, the organization-wide core financial system, that's added some new expense in this category. And, you know, we had, we had some, we had some new expense, obviously in election officers' expense that, that was a change that was made in the beginning of 2021. So that's new. Mass transportation, you know, that, that's our contribution to SEPTA primarily. That is up versus 2021. And the others are, are pretty self-explanatory. On the expense, on the expense side down below, the savings, you know, we talked a little bit about, you know, the lost revenue, you know, out at the, at the correctional facility. Well, here, you know, you see the flip side where we're saving in food provisions. That's primarily at the correctional facility and primarily due to, you know, a lower amount of inmates that, that are currently in the, in the population. Okay. So let me just talk a little bit more about what's embedded here. So in the expense, we talked about personnel costs going up by 10.2 million. That includes full staffing in 2022 to address the county's current service levels, which we know, you know, have increased particularly, you know, in the last two years because of certain things that, you know, we need to address, you know, changing, you know, changing departmental responsibilities, dealing, you know, with the pandemic, dealing with the recovery. I did talk a little bit about the pension. That's, you know, roughly at 22 million now versus around 16. So that's a significant driver, you know, in this, this 10 million. One of the, one of the areas that we've done very well in and are continuing to do better in is employee healthcare costs. It's been stable in recent years and, you know, we got some good news on, on a, a recent stop-loss renewal, which came in very favorable. So, you know, with that, I think that, you know, we're probably going to be stable again in 2022 based on the kind of experience that we're having right now. So that's good news. There's been many cost containment programs that have been beneficial to the employees and the county that have been implemented in recent years. And so savings from that, you know, carry on into our base. And I think that, that has, you know, a large part, that's a large part of why, you know, we continue to see stability there, you know, versus the private sector or other public sector organizations that, you know, can see increases, you know, all the way up to double digits, depending on the kind of plans and stuff like that, that they had. We also have base wage increases incorporated into this budget proposal for all non-contractual employees. The budget assumes a 2.75% base wage increase. It also includes all the fringe benefits, you know, FIC attacks and things like that that go with it. This does not apply to county elected officials, row officers or the board of commissioners. Those, those salaries will remain unchanged from 2021. We also have contractual employee base wage increases. So the county has five labor groups, all under contract currently, multi-year contracts. So those, those numbers are embedded into the $10 million increase as well. And there's a few other personnel items. We have a continuation of aligning our departmental work schedules to a more standardized schedule, 37 and a half hours a week. You know, as you know, in recent years, we had, you know, schedules of 33.75, 35, 40. But this is more standardization. It gets a, a large chunk of the departments that were remaining on that kind of schedule. So that's included in the proposal here. And it also provides funding for new resources countywide in the various departments to indire, address some of the increasing demand we have for core county services. Talked about the pension. I, I would just note that, you know, this is, this would be our second consecutive year of funding, you know, at 100%. And, you know, it's, it's what is expected of us by, you know, our actuaries, Moody's, everybody, you know, that, that views our financial positions. You know, this is, you know, our long-term pension obligation for current employees and retirees. So getting to the goal of funding at 100% is a great achievement and maintaining it, you know, is, is, you know, a bit challenging, you know, going through it here. You know, primarily the, the increase here from one year to the next is driven by our actuarial report that, that's issued every year. And there's some assumptions, you know, that have changed for, for everybody, for all government units that need to be addressed, and they do drive some of the numbers here. We, once we get to this point, we'll probably be stable for the next several years based on, you know, the size of the plan, the number of employees, retirees. So we expect that, you know, once we do get to the $21, $22 million level, that'll, that'll be our base in the budget. So overall, those are the majority of the, you know, high-level summary of the, the cost increases and, and what's in some of the, the major swings. But, you know, expenditure savings and cost containment is an area that, you know, we don't talk a lot about. And I think some things get lost. Like we talked about the negative appropriation. And there are things that happen every year where we're saving against the budget. For instance, in this budget, it proposes the elimination of 14 full-time vacant positions. That's built into the number. We also talked about just some of the correctional facility cost savings. But all in all, on a budget to budget basis, there's about a million dollar savings in the operating budget of the correctional facility in a number of areas. So there's ongoing recurring expenditure savings, you know, from prior year cost containment initiatives. And, you know, I included, you know, just one that I really think gets lost because we forget about it once we do it. But obviously with, you know, where interest rates have been over the last five years, we took full advantage of refining our debt and we completed six bond refinancings since 2015. That resulted in $11 million of overall budgetary savings, which is spread out. But we've already realized 5.3 million of it. And in this budget, there's another 700,000 that was programmed in. And then, you know, in '23 and beyond, there's another 5 million that's spread out all the way up to 2039. Another example is, you know, on the energy side. We locked into, you know, electricity generation contracts and gas con, natural gas contracts, you know, multi-year contracts beginning in, you know, 17 that, you know, were projected to save us significant money, and they have. We've tracked them and we're still below the base that we were, you know, spending in 2017. So there are other areas like this where, you know, we're saving against the budget. And as I said, you know, that's our practice. And, you know, from all the way down to the departments, you know, we, we tried to save against the budget. You know, we talk about it, you know, throughout the year, you know, particularly when we get into the summer months, you know, where things are. So. Just to circle back to, before we start talking about capital, you know, as I said, there is a new money borrowing projected for 2022. You know, you'll see in, in the capital plan itself, it, it shows that, you know, approximately 200 million of funding would come from the county. We do have about 36 million that's carrying over on a projection basis. So, you know, if, if these were really the numbers and the 36 carried over, it would be a, a smaller borrowing. But as I said, we'll, we'll be reevaluating that. And the budget does, you know, anticipate something at this level and includes, you know, new, new debt service that would be offset by whatever the drawdown is on the assigned fund balance. There's also another 13 million in the capital plan for road and bridge capital projects, which we have separate borrowings for to fund those that the debt service is paid out of the motor vehicle registration fund. We still do have, you know, I think about 16 or 17 million of bond proceeds that will likely carry us through 2022, and we probably won't have to do a borrowing for these capital projects. I did want to mention before I turn to capital, a program that the board approved for 2021 implementation, and it's our new real estate tax deferral program. This, this allows the deferral payment of real estate taxes, just the increase in, in any given year that, you know, a qualified homeowner applies and, you know, establishes a base year typically. When, you know, the year you apply, that, that becomes the base year. And then any increase could be deferred like, you know, the $49 that we were talking about. There are, you know, some, some requirements, you know, you have to be 65 years of age by December 31st, household income of 35,000 or less. There are some calculations that. There are some calculations that come into play there. It takes into consideration just 50% of your social security income, so it's not, it's not your full social security. And you have to be current on all your county real estate tax bills as well. So we have information posted out on the county website, but I did want to, you know, put out there that if a homeowner is interested in this program, they can reach out to us directly in the finance department. We can talk through it. They can email us, or, you know, they can pull down the information, you know, and pursue it themselves. I think that, you know, it's easier to talk through this kind of thing with someone so they really understand, you know, what happens under this kind of program. But it's beneficial, it really is, overall. And, you know, most people just need to understand that aspect of it. So quickly, turning over to the capital plan. So real high level here in 2022. Overall expenses projected on a budgetary basis for all capital projects are about 245 million. You can see, you know, the breakdown of the major categories and, you know, these have various funding sources. I mentioned 200 million is what, you know, is shown in the budget document itself as county capital bond proceeds. So, you know, the other 45 million is coming from other sources, whether it be grant revenue or MVR. You, you do have a detailed copy of the proposed capital budget. It lists all the projects in detail. When you look at the five-year plan, you know, it's roughly 900 million in total. And, you know, there are some larger projects that have commenced or, you know, are underway or may, you know, begin next year that are embedded in our five-year plan. There are a few new projects, and they're noted in the capital plan with an asterisk. What we do plan to do is that by the meeting in December, when the, when the budget is scheduled for adoption, we're going to have on our county website our electronic version of the capital budget, which has a storybook and provides all the details of each of the projects, a breakdown of the numbers. That's going to be released at that point, and the public will be able to go in and see, you know, by project, you know, what's going on, what are the updates from last year, what's the status, and then all the, all the revenues and expenses that go with it. We will have our landing page open after the presentation today, so they'll be able to go out and see some information. But we're going to have the full detail rolled out by the next meeting. So just to finish up here, because your action that you're going to take in December will require the inclusion of the American Rescue Plan Act or the ARPA funding. So I just wanted to quickly go over it, and I provided, you know, some detail here for the public to see too, you know, in the next few slides. But, you know, as you know, the county's receiving direct ARPA funding from the federal government. We received 80 million of it, 50% this year, and another 50% will come in 2021, or 2022. The Recovery Office that's been established will be managing the programs and the funding. And, you know, in the weeks and months ahead, there's going to be more and more information coming out, you know, on the planning of these funds. But on a budgetary basis, we did have to put forward, you know, what, what we think could happen. And so that's what you're seeing here. And it's just generally, you know, showing that we've received the 80 million, another 80 million will come in, and then it projects about 32 million of expense next year. That projection's based on, you know, we know that this funding could be used over a five-year period as long as it meets all the commitment requirements that are in federal guidelines. So as I said, it's a budget. The expenses could be higher or lower. You know, plans are underway, and we'll know more, you know, as the year opens on, you know, where things are going, and we'll be reporting out on it. I did note in the presentation, we have our direct link to the Recovery Office webpage that provides more detail, and we'll also include updates in the future. And we provided just, you know, the major programs and the descriptions that are in the federal guidelines that the Recovery Office will be following. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. D'Orton. Put a motion on the floor. I will move that the proposed budget for Montgomery County fiscal year 2022 shall be posted to the county's website. In a printed copy, shall be available for inspection and review by the public. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Well, thank you, Mr. D'Orton, for that very detailed description of our budget for, excuse me, our proposed budget for 2022. And as many of the workers and families watching today's meeting know, a budget is a reflection of priorities. And the budget we're proposing today reflects some very important priorities for our county, ones that have become more challenging to achieve during the COVID-19 pandemic and our ongoing recovery efforts, all while investing in our workers and maintaining our strong financial footing, something critical to attracting jobs and investments to our growing region. Here are a few things that this proposed budget will do. First, this budget continues to invest in strong services to all 856,000 Pennsylvanians who call Montgomery County their home. It supports critical infrastructure and ensures our workforce can do its job to serve our constituents. To make that possible, we have built-in controls to plan for uncertain costs related to our COVID-19 recovery and the extensive physical and economic damage from the remnants of Hurricane Ida. We hope to be reimbursed for many of the county's costs incurred while supporting our residents who were impacted by Ida. However, we anticipate some of those costs will have to be absorbed by the county's normal operating budget. We know that our residents need a workforce that can respond to the ever-increasing number and complexity in the services that we deliver. So this year, we are proposing significant investments in our workforce. Constituent services need to be delivered in a fair and equitable manner throughout the county, from public health and safety support to the needs for our veterans and delivery of mental health supports, just to name a few. Many of our staff are experiencing a significant increase in the volume of work they must handle every day. That is why this budget calls for adding a modest number of new positions to critical roles that support our county's most vulnerable residents. Staff working in our Veterans Affairs Office, Office of Children and Youth, Office of Public Health, Department of Public Safety, our Parks, Trails, and Historic Sites, and our Information Technology Department are just a few that are reporting a substantially higher number of service requests this year. For example, our Veterans Affairs Office reports an influx in requests for their services with a 60% increase in new clients this year alone. This includes a doubling of clients who need mental health services. Similarly, since Pennsylvania's implementation of new broader reporting mandates to keep children safe, the workload of our Office of Children and Youth has doubled without increases in staff. In addition, increases in mental health needs and substance use disorders result in cases that are more complicated and time-consuming to investigate and resolve. Our Office of Children and Youth workers need support and relief to effectively manage this caseload in a way that is responsive to and supportive of our families in meeting their goal to keep children safe. As mental health needs continue to increase and people seek treatment, we also see increases in the need for early interventions for our youth. The current caseload of this team is higher than recommended and higher than our peer counties. Our Public Safety Department, which has responded admirably to both the pandemic and Hurricane Ida, needs additional infrastructure and logistical support to ensure we have all resources needed to respond to any emergency. And since the start of the pandemic, we have worked to make as many of our constituent services as possible available online. We continue to invest in our IT department and infrastructure to ensure our residents' privacy and security. This enables our residents to more easily access services and our employees to more effectively serve clients. As we rapidly responded to the pandemic and transitioned to remote work, our IT staff have had to increase their security protocols, technology deployment, and the technical skills of our employees, all while keeping our network's security at the forefront. Our employees are our biggest asset. And in addition to rightsizing our workforce, we must fairly compensate them, which is why this budget proposes a modest wage increase for non-contract employees to recognize the critical work that they have been tasked with during this pandemic and their important work and our continued recovery efforts. We are also undergoing a review of pay equity and salary competitiveness across county departments. One important example of this is a proposed staff realignment in the Office of the Public Defender. This change will continue our commitment to ensure parity between the Public Defender's Office and the District Attorney's Office, as well as invest in the quality legal defense of the Public Defender's clients. This practice will help us reach our workforce goals to attract, retain, and promote staff in an equitable way. Separate from our operating budget, another core function of county government is to maintain and repair critical county infrastructure through the county's capital budget. The 2022 Capital Improvement Program includes $214 million in county funding to continue moving forward with important infrastructure improvements to our county-owned roads and bridges, parks, trails, and other facilities. This year, we broke ground on our most transformative project to date, the Montgomery County Justice Center, part of the Montgomery County Campus Plan Project. This phase of the campus plan ties three complex projects into one. It will construct a new, modern county justice center, completely renovate the existing historic courthouse facility, and more than double the size of the reimagined Hancock Square Park as accessible and active public green space right on Main Street in Norristown. The campus plan and new justice center will consolidate and improve court operations, allowing our Health and Human Services offices to move into One Montgomery Plaza, bringing hundreds more employees into downtown Norristown. And most importantly, it will create a more efficient workflow and a better and more convenient experience for our constituents. The Capital Improvement Program prioritizes the long-range improvements that will ensure Montgomery County continues to be a great place to live, work, and invest. In addition to this budget's direct positive impact on our constituents' daily lives, it ensures that Montgomery County remains on a sound financial footing, due to 10 years of adhering to fiscal priorities, investing in long-term capital planning, improving our aging infrastructure, and maintaining an appropriate fund balance. To be clear, we still face ongoing challenges and uncertainty exacerbated by the COVID-19 pandemic and our ongoing recovery efforts. This proposed budget represents months of planning to help us identify both cost savings and necessary investments in important programs and services to better serve this county's 856,000 constituents. The county is experiencing decreases in some revenue sources coupled with moderate expenditure growth. In order to support ongoing services for our constituents that benefit them every day and to balance our budget as required by law for county governments, we are recommending a planned $12 million drawdown of our fund balance and asking homeowners to pay an average of about $49 more per year so we can bring in additional revenue. As the county's needs evolve over time, we also continue to identify ways to contain or cut our expenses. This involves the reduction of positions and expenses wherever possible. By doing this, we've been able to redeploy resources to areas of higher need throughout the county. Overall, we have reduced expenses in certain key areas by $2 million, along with eliminating 14 positions. For example, after the Montgomery County Court of Common Pleas instituted COVID-19 safety protocols early in the pandemic, we were able to safely reduce our prison population by 35%. The ongoing implementation of the pre-trial services team and other criminal justice reform efforts will ensure we safely sustain these lower numbers in our correctional facility while at the same time keeping families and communities intact. And as a result of these programs, we have reduced prison expenses alone by over $1 million. Together, these cost savings and additional revenues will ensure that children and seniors and veterans can get the services that they need and that we can continue to keep rebuilding our infrastructure and create jobs. Looking at the county's future, thanks to the American Rescue Plan, over the next several years, the county will have a once-in-a-generation opportunity to invest in our communities in a bold, equitable manner to help us recover from the pandemic and build back better. We are committed to ensuring our American Rescue Plan funds go to our communities for their intended purpose and make impactful, long-term improvements. We want everyone to learn more about this funding and the county's plan to engage the community and develop a collaborative plan to put these dollars to work for you. There will be a town hall on Tuesday, November 30th, at 6:00 PM for residents to learn more. You can participate in person or online. The program will be available in English, Spanish, and Korean. Registration details are available on our website calendar, and we urge you to sign up to attend and let us know what, how you think these funds could be used. Despite this year's many challenges, I am proud of the work that went into this budget. It maintains Montgomery County on a sound financial footing while continuing to deliver services and supports that improve our constituents' daily lives. This budget continues our commitment to invest in our workforce, our infrastructure, and the delivery of services to our constituents. I intend to vote in support of posting the proposed 2022 budget and capital improvement plan. And I want to thank Mr. Dean D'Orton, our Chief Financial Officer, other county leadership particularly, Mr. Lee Salkesiak, our Chief Operating Officer, and Ms. Barbara O'Malley, our Deputy Chief Operating Officer. They have spent countless hours working on this budget. And I also want to thank all of our row officers, our elected row officers, all of our department heads, and all of the county employees that have contributed ideas and suggestions for this budget. And with that, I will turn it over to Commissioner Lawrence for his remarks.
I first want to start by saying thank you, Mr. D'Orton, for your presentation, and thank you for your leadership in developing this budget. I want to thank our COO, Lee Salkesiak, and the Deputy COO, Barbara O'Malley, as well. This proposed budget continues our investments in the core functions of county government. It reaffirms the county's commitment to employees past and present by advancing our pension fund and continues our commitment to fix the county's aging infrastructure that has been facing deferred maintenance for decades now. Strengthening the county's pension fund has been and remains a board priority. A fully funded pension fund helps us to maintain the AAA bond rating, which keeps our interest rates low as we borrow money to improve our roads, bridges, parks, and other county assets. That's why this budget is proposing $21.7 million for the pension fund in the 2022 budget. This is 100% the annual required contribution. I'm also proud to maintain the support of our community partners and the services they provide our residents. And I want to specifically mention the Norristown Public Library. Libraries are often the center of our communities. They are a community gathering place where residents can meet, learn, explore, and grow. This proposed budget includes increased operating funding to support the dedicated library staff, as well as capital funding to help reimagine the Norristown library space and to create a modern community center that Norristown and the entire county can be proud of. We have successfully leveraged the revenue from the county's $5 motor vehicle registration fee to continue making major investments in the county's roads, bridges, and intersections. In 2022, major, major capital projects such as Slump Road Bridge, Swamp Pike Bridge, Rostowski Road Bridge, Ridge Pike Improvements, and the Road Repaving Program will be underway. All these projects utilize a combination of federal, state, and motor vehicle registration funding. This proposed budget prioritizes the county's mission to repair its aging infrastructure. I am proud that our inventory of structurally deficient bridges has decreased from 61 to 29. Since 2013, 32 bridges have been rehabilitated or replaced. In the last four years alone, 15 15 new bridges have been reconstructed. In 2022, we will have three active bridge projects in design and eight underway in construction, funded by our Capital Improvement Plan in a combination of federal, state, and motor vehicle registration funding. We are also committing to upgrading our county facilities to improve the experience of our workforce and the public who visit our facilities. Specifically, the capital plan supports electrical and H-Rack upgrades to One Montgomery Plaza in Norristown, improvements to our aging Willow Grove Satellite Office, building a new warehouse to better support our emergency preparedness for our Department of Public Safety, and constructing a new coroner's facility. These capital projects are not just to improve a building's physical appearance. They are much-needed upgrades to support our increased service levels. For instance, the new coroner's facility will enable increased capacity to support their workload that continues to grow each year. The number of cases processed by the coroner's office has nearly doubled since 2013, and all indications point to a continued onward upward trend given our county's growing population and demographics. And the county will also continue to leverage state and federal grant funding by investing capital dollars in our parks, trails, and other public facilities. Our parks and trails and historic sites continue to be popular destinations for our residents and visitors alike. In fact, they have been visited by over 2.3 million people so far this year. That represents an increase of more than 200,000 visits as compared to the same time last year. The capital budget includes $18.8 million over five years to maintain and improve these popular destinations. Our operating budget includes additional funding to support more positions for our park staff to make sure that everyone can continue to enjoy these high-quality public spaces. As our population continues to grow, our services are ever in greater demand, and our residents deserve prompt, quality service delivery. And our employees are dedicated public servants, and we are looking to recruit and retain the best employees that can meet these growing demands. And for all these reasons, I also intend to vote in support of posting the 2022 budget.
Yes, this proposed budget reflects higher spending, higher borrowing, and higher debt, and higher taxes, all three of which I am strongly opposed to. The operating expenditures increased by $37 million in this proposed budget. Debt service increase of $6.9 million. There's a new money bond issue anticipated in 2022. And the capital budget, which is extremely costly, is $245 million for the 2022 year. $80 million of that going to the county campus construction plan. So I will need a roll call vote on this, and I'm opposing advertising this budget.
Before we take that vote, I just want to let folks know that the county's proposed... Wow, actually, let's take the vote first. All right, so Ms. Washington.
Chair O'Connell.
I.
Placed Chair Lawrence.
I.
Commissioner Gail.
Opposed.
Motion carries, and the budget will be posted. So I just want to let folks know that the county's proposed 2022 operating and capital budget will be posted online on the county's finance page and will be available for public review in person at our One Montgomery Plaza location in Norristown. Two public hearings will be held on the budget. One on Thursday, December 2, at 10:00 AM, and then a second on Thursday, December 2, at 5:30 PM. The commissioners will consider the budget for adoption at our regularly scheduled board meeting on December 16 at 10:00 AM. We encourage the public to review the budget online, reach out to our office with comments, or attend one of the public hearings. Information on how to provide feedback on the budget or attend a hearing can be found on our online meeting calendar. And that is at mocopa.org/calender. All right, thank you, Mr. D'Orton. All right, we will move on to resolutions. The first is for a construction reimbursement agreement with Norfolk Southern Railway Company for the Ridge Pike Improvement Project. Mr. Edman, good morning.
Yes, good morning, commissioners. Good to see you. This proposed action is related to the Ridge Pike Project, Section B, which is between Belvoir Road and Chemical Road in Plymouth Township. As part of that project, we have to replace a bridge, County Bridge Number 257. It spans Norfolk Southern's tracks. So therefore, in order to replace the bridge, we have to be in and around their tracks. And so they are requiring a reimbursement agreement. They call it a construction agreement. And it basically would enable the county to reimburse them for the costs of flagging and other safety measures that they are requiring of us as we go ahead and replace that bridge in real time at some point. So therefore, before you, some of the details. It's a $692,168 reimbursement agreement. This is a not-to-exceed amount. It cannot go higher than that. We will, as a county, receive 95% of it back, meaning that the actual cost to us, as a county, will be $34,608.40. So 95% comes back, 5% we actually end up paying when all is said and done. The Planning Commission and the Roads and Bridges Department prepared the construction agreement using a PennDOT template. It's been reviewed and approved by PennDOT, Norfolk Southern, and our own county solicitor's office. It's partially executed by Norfolk Southern, and so therefore, we are bringing it to the commissioners for your consideration and hopeful approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Edman. I will move that the proper county officials, in accordance with the authority conferred by law, subject to the approval of the county solicitor, are hereby authorized to enter into a construction agreement with Norfolk Southern Railway Corporation that will allow Montgomery County to reimburse Norfolk Southern Railway Corporation for an amount not to exceed $692,168 for construction work for the Ridge Pike Improvement Project. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any board comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Edman. Next is an authorization of an intergovernmental shared-use path maintenance agreement between PennDOT and Montgomery County. Mr. Hartman.
How are you?
Good morning.
Just gonna pull up some slides.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Last week, PennDOT completed the Barbado Street Connector Project, which involved the construction of a new connector road between Lafayette Street and Washington Street in Norristown, which you can see here. At the top of the screen is West Main Street. On the left side of the screen is Markley. And halfway down the screen, you see Lafayette Street, and below that, West Washington Street. The connector road is in the area where the red circle is located, and I'll show you a more detailed plan in just a moment. But before I do that, I wanted to point out that the Schuylkill River Trail runs through the area of this project, and that's the blue line that extends from the bottom left and goes generally horizontally across the drawing. The new Barbado Street Connector passes through the existing MCIU parking lot and is approximately 250 feet long with a curb-to-curb width of about 30 feet. The project is designed to alleviate traffic at the busy intersection of Markley Street and Main by providing access to business properties located along Water Street in Norristown, which is generally located to the west of Markley. As a result of this project, PennDOT has relocated and reconstructed a portion of the Schuylkill River Trail to the west and south of the new connector. So looking at this plan... I guess you can't see the cursor. But the connector road is the green line that goes down the middle of the drawing. You can see how it connects Lafayette Street down to West Washington Street. The blue line represents the old alignment of the Schuylkill River Trail through this section, and that's the line that was on the prior slide. The Schuylkill River Trail was realigned as part of this project, and that's represented by the orange line that now goes across the site. It's that S pattern that you see on the left-hand side of the drawing. The relocated SRT, or Schuylkill River Trail, continues to serve pedestrian and limited non-motorized traffic, such as bikes, strollers, as well as very limited motorized vehicles for emergency and maintenance purposes only. The reconstructed portion of the Schuylkill River Trail has a maximum 5% slope to meet ADA standards for multi-use trails and includes an A grade crossing at the Barbado Street Connector at the intersection with Washington Street. And that's down at the bottom of the drawing. You can see where the trail goes across the new Barbado Street Connector. The identification of permanent reserved right-of-way for the relocated SRT within the new PennDOT right-of-way and the relocation of the SRT within an existing trail easement provides for the permanent protection of the trail and continued ongoing access. As a result of this project and its impact upon the trail, PennDOT and the county collaborated to document the terms and conditions for the project in an intergovernmental shared-use path maintenance agreement. This agreement addresses numerous issues regarding the Schuylkill River Trail, including trail construction, accessibility, notice of project completion and acceptance, and trail maintenance and management. There was no cost to the county for the relocation of this trail. As with the existing Schuylkill River Trail in this area, our Parks Department is responsible for the trail's long-term maintenance and management. Therefore, we are requesting your authorization for the proper county officials to execute the intergovernmental shared-use path maintenance agreement with Pennsylvania Department of Transportation.
Thank you, Mr. Hartman. I will move that the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners, in accordance with the authority conferred by law, subject to the approval of the county solicitor, are hereby authorized to execute an intergovernmental shared-use path maintenance agreement with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation. Be it further resolved that the county does hereby designate Scott France, Executive Director of the Montgomery County Planning Commission, as the official to execute the intergovernmental shared-use path maintenance agreement. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any board comment? All right, hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Hartman.
Thank you.
Next, we have authorization of a land swap of a parcel in Trap using open space funds. Oh, so, Mr. Hartman, you are back.
And then we have someone on Zoom with us. Okay. If you would like to unmute someone.
I'll unmute him, yeah. He does, yeah. Hold on one second. Oh, he's unmuted. Okay, we're all set. Thank you. Okay. Before I begin with my description of the proposed land swap, I'd like to quickly introduce Marcus Dolny, who is the Trap Borough Manager, who is with us via Zoom and who will be making just a few comments following mine, and is also available for any questions related to this proposal. So let me begin, though. Trap Borough is the owner of a... Oops, we need to throw the presentation up here. Is it... Here we go, okay.
Sorry about that. No problem. It just is a little finicky. Yep.
Thanks. Okay. Trap Borough is the owner of a 6.67 acre parcel located at 805 Main Borough. Trap purchased this property in 1998 with $270,000 of county open space funds. Over the years, Trap has explored and studied the use of this parcel for public recreational use. And just to give you some context, the parcel that we're talking about is in the upper-left-hand corner that's in the yellow circle. You can see it's a U shape, and that's relevant, which I'll point out in just a moment. To give you some additional context, running, I guess it would be southeast on Main Street, there's Borough Hall in Trap, and across the street from that is the Trap Borough Rambo Park, which is a fairly popular park that you might be familiar with. At the time of the purchase, a restrictive covenant was placed on the property requiring that it be maintained as open space, and that no change of use, transfer of ownership, or sale of any of the properties shall occur without the written consent of Montgomery County. Azad Iskender LLC is the owner of the 1.2 acre parcel located at 803 Main Street in Trap, which is currently surrounded on three sides by the 6.67 acre Trap parcel. So zooming in a bit, there's the U-shaped parcel that is currently owned by Trap, and the Iskender parcel is that out parcel that extends into the Trap parcel. But it does have frontage along Main Street. Trap is proposing a land swap in which the borough will transfer approximately 17,500 square feet of its 6.7 acre parcel to Azad Iskender LLC. And in exchange, Iskender LLC will transfer approximately 17,500 square feet of its parcel to Trap, resulting in a one-to-one land swap in acreage. The proposed land swap will be accomplished by means of a lot-line adjustment between the two parcels. And a future, new future 5,000-square-foot office building and parking area are proposed for development on what is currently the Iskender parcel. So zooming into that parcel, what is going to happen is this existing portion of the Iskender parcel, 17,500 square feet, will be transferred to Trap Borough, and it will become part of Lot 2. In exchange, this portion of the Trap parcel, 17,500 square feet, plus or minus, will then be transferred from the borough to Iskender. So the resulting parcels will be Lot 1, which will be this entire area right here, So the resulting parcels will be Lot 1, which will be this entire area right here, and Lot 2, owned by Trap, which will then be this area outside of it. The existing declaration of covenants, conditions, and restrictions for the Trap parcel will be amended to reflect the adjusted lot line and the continued limitation of the resultant Trap parcel for use as open space and recreation land. There will be no direct cost to the county for this transaction. At its October 27, 2021 meeting, the Montgomery County Open Space Board reviewed and discussed the proposed land swap. The Board debated the merits of the proposal, including the net benefits to the Borough and the county. It was noted that the revised lot lines resulted in better overall parcel configuration for both the Borough's intended use of its property as a public open space resource, as well as Iskender's planned development. It is our understanding that the Borough has a good working relationship with Iskender, who has pledged to be a supporter of the future Borough Park. The Open Space Board subsequently and unanimously recommended that the Board of Commissioners authorize the proposed land swap, noting that the Borough should continue to exert effort with Iskender to seek opportunities and improvements that will benefit and enhance the Borough parcel and future public park. It is also our understanding from a conversation that I had with the Office of the Board of Assessment, that while there may be a reassessment of the parcels during the lot line change process, the ultimate assessed value of the reconfigured Iskender Lot 1, prior to any future development, would be essentially the same as its current assessed value, because the post-swapped lot area is essentially the same, and the improvements currently on Lot 1 will remain on Lot 1. So at this point, I'm finished with my presentation. I would like to just quickly turn it over to Marcus to see if he has any remarks.
Nothing. Just, word, Commissioners, thank you for entertaining this. And, you know, what we feel is this, the value to this to the Borough of Trap is it will enable us to revisit Main Street Park, which is part of our five-year plan for development for open space and use for the community. We felt that this was in the best interest for us to do this lot line adjustment to make a more comprehensive parcel for us to use in that planning. That's pretty much it, unless anyone has any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Dolny. Let me get a motion on the floor, and then if anyone has questions, we'll be right here. So I will move that the proper county officials, in accordance with the authority conferred by law, subject to the approval of the county solicitor, hereby authorize the proposed land swap in Trap Borough, Montgomery County, as shown in Exhibit A. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comment or questions? No? Okay. All right, then, hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Hartman.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dolny. All right, Mr. Stein, authorization of the transfer of the Open Link from Montgomery County to the Redevelopment Authority.
Yes, thank you. This relates to an item that has been sitting around for a while, but for the pandemic would have already been taken care of. The Open Link, which is one of our amazing community partners, is a nonprofit multi-service agency serving the Upper Perkyomen Valley. In addition to programs for residents of all ages, the Open Link runs senior centers for Montgomery County for that area. They do so at 452 East Penn Street in Pensburg and 517 Jefferson Street in East Greenville. Those are properties that are owned by the county and have been for decades and have been leased out to the Open Link and before that its predecessor organization for $1 a year. The Open Link inquired about purchasing the property. I think it makes sense because the county has been responsible for maintenance and that there are a certain number of capital improvements that are necessary. So it was determined that it made sense to transfer the properties to the Open Link to allow them to be able to expand on their services, utilize those properties as a resource, leverage them, and be able to expand their programming. In exchange, well, in order to accomplish that, the county will transfer the properties to the Redevelopment Authority. The Redevelopment Authority will then turn around and immediately transfer those properties to the Open Link, and both transactions happening for a nominal $1, $10 consideration. At the same time, there will be an agreement that you would authorize today that would, between the county and the Open Link, under which the county would supply the Open Link with $131,170 to pay for necessary repairs to the roof that we were responsible for, that the Open Link has had to take care of, and also including the removal, the humane removal of a family of bats from the roof, from the ceiling of one of those buildings. So those costs obviously increased over the course of the pandemic, so it's a little bit more than anticipated originally, but it's $131,000 to the Open Link to allow them to pay for those costs. And also, in exchange, the Open Link will be agreeing that they will continue to serve the county with senior centers in that geographic region for the next 25 years, either themselves or, should be necessary, they will find some other vendor to do so, but they are on the hook for that for the next two and a half decades.
Thank you, Mr. Stein. Mr. Bush, before I put a motion on the floor, good morning, or afternoon, sorry, would you like to make any comments?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank you, Chair Kosh, Vice Chair Lawrence, and Commissioner Hale for consideration of this. As you guys know, we've been serving the folks in the Upper Perkyomen Valley for more than 46 years. And although it's been a tough 20 months, we've been able to not only maintain, but in a number of cases, increase our services to the people of the Upper Perkyomen Valley. And we are happy to report that also we've, we're coming out of the pandemic in a sound financial position, and we really are grateful for this possibility of increasing our security and freedom to continue to improve and adapt these two buildings to better serve the public in the Upper Perkyomen Valley for years and years into the future. And that's certainly the commitment of both the Board and the staff of the Open Link to continue to do so. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Bush. I will move that the proper county officials, in accordance with the authority conferred by law, subject to the approval of the county solicitor, hereby authorize Montgomery County to enter into a sales agreement with the Montgomery County Redevelopment Authority to transfer ownership of property and buildings at 452 East Penn Street, Pensburg, and 517 Jefferson Street, East Greenville. Be it further resolved that Montgomery County will pay $131,170 to repair the deteriorated roofs at 452 East Penn Street in Pensburg and 517 Jefferson Street, East Greenville, in exchange for the commitment from the Open Link to continue to provide community senior services for the next 25 years. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comment? Well, Mr. Bush, I'll just say, I know this has been a long time coming. I think this was one of the first visits I had when I became a Commissioner back in 2015, was to visit these locations. So just thank you so much for the work you've done during this pandemic. I know it has been difficult, but you've really risen to the occasion, and I am glad that we've finally been able to resolve this, and I certainly intend to vote for this.
Mr. Bush, it's great to see you, and thank you for all that you do.
All right. Okay, hearing no additional comments, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Bush. Thank you, Mr. Stein.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Stein, we have an approval of amendments to the collective bargaining agreements with ASME Local 676.
Yes, this resolution represents an amendment for ASME Local 676, which represents certain county employees, including employees of Montgomery County Sheriff's Office. County administration was approached by the Sheriff's Office and representatives from the deputies regarding recruiting and retention issues the office has been experiencing. In discussions, it was determined that it made sense to offer to move the deputies from a 37.5-hour work week to a 40-hour work week, and to move certain of the administrative staff of the Sheriff's Office from a 33.75-hour work week to a 37.5-hour work week. In exchange, the county, as a concession, got an additional year on the current contract, which we were halfway through. It runs, currently runs through the end of next year. This would extend it out by an additional year under the same terms and conditions as the final year of the contract, meaning a 2.5% salary increase for those deputies, and they would pay 18% of their health care costs, just as they will do in the next year.
Thank you. I will move that the proper county officials, in accordance with the authority conferred by law, subject to the approval of the county solicitor, are hereby authorized to execute the amended agreement between the County of Montgomery and the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, Local 676, covering those employees represented by this bargaining unit. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comment? All right, hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Okay, Ms. Pardue.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. You should have in front of you the final copy of the Commissioner's Department's personnel list. It is a four-page document dated Wednesday, November 17, 2021, with the timestamp of 9:20 a.m. All positions have been reviewed and accounted for and are presented for consideration.
Thank you. I will move to approve the November 18, 2021 Personnel Presentation as given by Director of Human Resources, Ms. Donna Pardue, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comments? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you. All right, Ms. O'Malley, advertisements of RFPs.
One, we have an RFP on behalf of the Recovery Office for Community Technical Assistance Consultant Services. The successful responder will provide technical assistance, including program development, data analysis, document creation, and initiative planning, to ensure residents, businesses, and organizations are afforded equitable opportunity to submit input and proposals for American Rescue Plan Act funding consideration. Contractor will provide assistance in the areas of technology access, language and literacy barriers, and preparation of submission materials. The county is committed to complying with the U.S. Treasury mandate to engage their constituents and communities in developing plans to use these payments, given the scale of funding and its potential to catalyze broader economic recovery and rebuilding. Two, RFP on behalf of the Sheriff's Office for a Processing System. The successful responder will provide a universal system capable of mobile processing to process civil cases, real estate cases, returns, and perform accounting functions. All RFPs and bids are available on the county's purchasing website at www.montaco PA.org/purchasing.
Thank you. I will move to approve the preceding request for the advertisements of RFPs, as described by the Deputy Chief Operating Officer, Ms. Barbara O'Malley, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. I do want to just make a quick comment about item number one, and how important this is. We have learned throughout the past 20 months and heard from many of our small business owners and nonprofit owners that it was really challenging for them to apply for PPP and grants and other programs that were available to them as a result of the pandemic. Some businesses were well-equipped to do that, but many were not. And this RFP in particular is to ensure that that does not happen again as we move forward with opportunities under the American Recovery Plan, and that every business owner, nonprofit, community group in our county will have kind of a level playing field here when it comes to any assistance that they might need to make sure that they can apply for those monies, that they can make their voice heard, and how they think those monies should be deployed. So again, just wanted to highlight how important that is to make sure going forward, we can address some of the real challenges that we heard from our community over the past 20 months, and make sure everyone's got a fair shot at what comes next. Okay, all right, hearing no additional comments, we will move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. All right, next, awards of contract.
One, a contract award for assets and infrastructure municipality fees, Norristown Borough of Norristown, PA, $43,201.43. Contract provides permits for the One Montgomery Plaza Electrical Project. Two, contract award assets and infrastructure municipality fees, Lower Providence Township of Eagleville, PA, $74,666. Contract provides a traffic impact study and escrow fees for construction of a bus shelter near the new Coroner Facility. Three, contract award assets and infrastructure masonry services, Preferred Masonry Restoration Incorporated of Piper'sville, PA, $56,520. Contract provides masonry services for the Sunrise Mill Retaining Wall and Barn. Specification 6460 was viewed by 42 providers with seven responses received. Contract is awarded to the lowest responsible bidder. Four, contract award assets and infrastructure vehicle upfitting Triad Truck Equipment Incorporated of Pottstown, PA, $166,730. Contract provides dump body and plow package upfitting services of two Mack dump trucks for use by roads and bridges. Services are available through a PA Co-Stars contract. Five, contract award assets and infrastructure propane, suburban propane of Whippany, New Jersey, $35,000. Contract provides the supply of propane at various county facilities for the 2022 term. Suburban propane is the owner of the tanks and the only supplier that can provide the propane. Six, contract award district courts janitorial services, Clean Net of Philadelphia of King of Prussia, PA, $150,288. Contract provides janitorial services, including cleaning supplies, for 18 county leased district court facilities. RFP 2128 was viewed by 69 providers with five responses received. Contract is awarded to the highest-rated responder. Contract is for a period of one year with four optional annual renewal terms. Seven, contract award Health and Human Services consultant, multiple providers, $217,874.16. Contract provides various schedules related to a Bureau of Justice Assistance Stop School Violence Program. RFP 2146 was viewed by 32 providers with five responses received. Contract for Schedule B is awarded to the only responding provider who has met all qualifications of the RFP. Contract for Schedule C is awarded to the highest-rated provider. Contracts are for a period of five years contingent upon funding. Amount adjusted from $220,874.16 on public agenda posted 11/17/2021. Providers are Schedule B, Deveraux Advanced Behavioral Health of King of Prussia, PA; Schedule C, Research for Action of Philadelphia, PA. Eight, contract award Health and Human Services Prevention Program, multiple providers, $179,161. Contract provides various schedules related to a college drug and alcohol prevention and mental wellness program. RFP 2154 was viewed by 27 providers with three responses received. Contracts for Schedule A and B are awarded to the highest-rated providers. Contracts are for a period of five years contingent upon funding. Providers are Schedule A, Pacific Institute for Research and Education in Beltsville, Maryland; Schedule B, Prevention and Education Solutions LLC of Philadelphia, PA. Nine, contract award Health and Human Services Education Program, Child and Family Focus Incorporated of Audubon, PA, $99,451. Contract provides for parent evidence-based education programs with an emphasis on strong African-American families and families' Juarez in school districts and communities throughout Montgomery County. RFP 2155 was viewed by 20 providers with two responses received. Contract is awarded to the highest-rated provider. Contract is for a period of five years contingent upon funding. Ten, contract award Correctional Facility Vehicle, Bergy's Chevrolet of Colmore, PA, Contract provides for Chevrolet Dump Truck with Plow Package for Use at the Eagleville Campus. Vehicle is available through a PA Co-Stars contract. Eleven, contract award Public Safety Software, Rave Wireless Incorporated of Framingham, Massachusetts, $54,955.20. Contract provides for Smart 911 service for the county's 911 operators. Smart 911 assists 911 call takers and first responders in making faster and better decisions and shortens response time in order to save lives. Service is for a one-year period beginning November 11, 2021. Software is proprietary. Twelve, contract award Public Safety Monitoring Firm, Debris LLC of Pickingun, Mississippi, standby contract. Contract provides a no-cost standby contract with a disaster debris monitoring service to complement activation of the current debris management plan and to work alongside the county's debris removal contractor. RFP 2143 was viewed by 24 providers with two responses received. Contract is awarded to the highest-rated provider. Contract is for a period of one year with four optional annual renewals. Thirteen, contract renewal Recorder of Deeds Index Verification, Codified Incorporated of Chicago, Illinois, $60,000. Contract provides verification of accurate indexing information on recorded documents in the Recorder of Deeds office. This is the second of two optional annual renewals. Fourteen, contract amendment Assets and Infrastructure Construction Inspection Services, Traffic Planning and Design of Pottstown, PA, $10,227.20. Original contract provided for a consultant to administer full-time onsite construction oversight and inspection during the replacement of County Bridge Number 166, located on Swamp Pike over Swamp Creek in New Hannover Township. Amendment provides for concrete plant inspection services as required by PennDOT. Fifteen, contract amendment Assets and Infrastructure Elevator Maintenance, Otis Elevator Company of Maristown, New Jersey, $24,449. Original contract provides preventive maintenance and service for elevators in the county-owned facilities. Amendment provides for maintenance repairs at One Montgomery Plaza, Willa Grove, and the Norristown Parking Garage, not covered on the original maintenance agreement. Services are available through National IPA Contract. Sixteen, contract amendment Public Safety Trucks, GL Sayre Peterbilt of Conshohocken, PA, $16,388. Contract provides a 28-foot box truck for public safety. Amendment is due to supply chain-related cost increases. Seventeen, nine contract renewals and three amendments for Health and Human Services. Providers and services are listed at the end of the agenda and in the back of the room.
Thank you. I will move to approve the preceding awards of contract, as described by the Deputy Chief Operating Officer, Ms. Barbara O'Malley, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Awards of contract for emergency procurement for Hurricane Ida.
One, contract amendment Public Safety Debris Services, DRC Emergency Services LLC of Galveston, Texas, $2,109,092.42. Contract provides disaster debris clearance and removal services for Montgomery County in the event of an emergency. Amendment extends contract for first allowable renewal, allows compaction of construction and demolition debris for the PA Department of Environmental Protection, and allows removal of storm-related debris resulting from Hurricane Ida from county waterways. Contract was awarded at $0 with event pricing per logistical service fee schedule. Two, contract amendment Public Safety Debris Service, Debris Tech LLC of Pickingun, Mississippi, $1,500,000. Original contract provided emergency storm-related debris monitoring services necessary due to damage caused in Montgomery County by Hurricane Ida. Monitoring services will capture debris removal operations and provide documentation. Amendment provides for continued services necessary for storm-related damage.
Thank you. I will move to approve the preceding awards of contract, as described by the Deputy Chief Operating Officer, Ms. Barbara O'Malley, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. And next is awards of contract for the Southeast Pennsylvania Regional Task Force.
One, contract award Hardware Tough Rugged Laptops of Anaheim, California, $58,755.22. Contract provides 50 refurbished Tough Book laptops for Delaware County. Laptops will be used by Delaware County for mobile data terminals. Two, contract award Vehicle, LGV Incorporated of Burlington, Wisconsin, $260,633. Contract provides a customized vehicle which will serve as an equipment and personnel carrier for Montgomery County SWAT.
All right, I will move to approve the preceding awards of contract on behalf of the Southeast Pennsylvania Regional Task Force, as described by the Deputy Chief Operating Officer, Ms. Barbara O'Malley, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same, subject to the approval of the county solicitor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you. Any closing commissioner comments? Nope. All right, then I will announce several upcoming, or two upcoming, meeting dates. First is the Election Board Certification Meeting, which is November 22, 2021, at 12:00 p.m. And second is our next Board of Commissioners meeting, December 16, 2021. That will, of course, be the last meeting of this year. And then we do have those other public hearings, just as a reminder, on the proposed budget. And with that, I will move to adjourn the November 18, 2021 meeting of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Meeting is adjourned. We will move to Salary Board. Is the controller online?
Hello.
Hearing Controller Sanchez.
Good morning.
All right, good afternoon. We've been here a while. All right, Ms. Pardue, whenever you are ready. Ms. Pardue, whenever you are ready. Actually, my apologies. Is there any public comment on Salary Board? No, there's no public comment. Okay. Very good. Ms. Pardue.
Good morning, member, or good afternoon, members of Salary Board. You should have in front of you the final copy of the Salary Board list. It is a five-page document dated Wednesday, November 17, 2021, with a timestamp of 9:20 a.m. Of note, we have four retirees, Michael Gordon from Adult Probation after 36 years, Betty Stewart from Assets and Infrastructure after six years, Patricia Fallon from the Health Department after 20 years, and Carol Simmons from the Register of Wills after 17 years. All positions have been reviewed and accounted for and are presented for Salary Board consideration.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the November 18, 2021 Salary Board presentation as given by Director of Human Resources, Ms. Donna Pardue, and to authorize the proper county officials to execute the same?
So moved.
That Controller Sanchez?
Second.
Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Lawrence. Any more comment? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Are there any negative votes? Hearing none, motion carries. We have a second motion today around supplemental pay for vaccine and test policy. Mr. Stein, do you want to tell us?
Yes. Now, this would be formalizing the vaccine and test policies when we, that we offered to our employees, $150 incentive. So this would be for the supplemental pay, which would grant that $150 to employees that have shown that they are fully vaccinated and can provide proof thereof. And that is for eligible full-time or part-time employees. It does exclude certain people under a certain number of hours per diem employees, and it does exclude elected officials as well.
Thank you. Is there a motion that, except as restricted by statute or otherwise by Resolution 94-C-756 or Resolution 06-C290 relating to the salaries of certain elected officials, a one-time supplemental payment of $150 be provided to all qualified full-time and part-time employees? Qualified full-time and part-time employees for the purpose of this resolution are those that have received the COVID-19 vaccine and are considered fully vaccinated and have provided evidence thereof as set forth in the county's vaccine or test policy. This supplemental payment shall be available to qualified employees through December the 31st, 2021.
So moved.
That Controller Sanchez? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lawrence. I do have just one question, Mr. Stein. Anyone who begins employment with the county, are they eligible for this?
So long as they can become fully vaccinated and upload that information into our system by December 31st this year, we'll be, we'll receive it. And to give, just to give you a sense, so far we have had 2,292 employees that have uploaded that information, with the remaining approximately 400 employees who will require testing on a weekly basis. So that puts us just shy of 85%.
Great. Any other board comments?
I have a comment. This major personnel and spending decision was made without my knowing or input, and frankly, I find this taxpayer-funded carrot for so-called good behavior to be morally unacceptable and fiscally irresponsible, and I will be opposing it.
All right. Any other board comment? All right. Ms. Washington, could we have a real call vote, please?
Chair Akos.
Aye.
Vice Chair Lawrence.
Aye.
Commissioner Hale.
Opposed.
Controller Sanchez.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. Next, we have a retiree, retiree acknowledgement. Judge O'Neill, you have been waiting patiently. Good morning, good afternoon.
On Zoom, but I don't know whether you guys under, with the public feed on Zoom, and I didn't know whether we had gotten here, there's somebody reading contracts while you're speaking to the public. And I'm going, oh my lord, what's happening? I rushed over. Thank you for having me.
Thank you, Judge.
Obviously, I felt, I have sat in Mr. Stein's seat back when the earth was still cooling, and I then remembered it was late November, and I saw the budget on the agenda. And I began to get a little post-traumatic, like, oh my god, they're talking about the budget, so I might have some extra time. But I didn't want to miss the opportunity, and I promise I will be brief. But I just thought that the retirement of Michael Gordon as the chief adult probation officer should have some recognition, at least for the department that he served for all his years for this county, the being the courts, originally starting in the correctional institution, as really a social service director and a number of other positions that we quickly learned in the courts, and even going back as far when I was private criminal defense attorney, is that Mike Gordon was a go-to guy. And he, from the very time that I went on the bench, began to work with him as the bench. Again, I don't know if there's a public recognition of how dependent we are upon this idea of family, of inter-agency cooperation, of all our departments working together. And Mike Gordon represented that to all of us in the courts. He was always there in order to solve problems, crises, to make sure things worked efficiently. He served in that capacity for many years until the retirement of Michael Hamill from our Adult Probation Department. There were many applicants. Mike Gordon applied. This was at the time I was on the bench, and I think there was little doubt with the members of the bench that that go-to guy and the way in which he has served this county and the court systems of this county was the natural choice for the chief of adult probation. Adult probation is the commissioners', well, that's a difficult agency to run. It's a difficult agency run because it's directly out there in terms of community safety, supervision of individuals that have come through our criminal justice system, and the public probably doesn't know much about it. We can read about things that, you know, people point out, some things that may be negative, things that need to change, but the face of the Adult Probation Department for the entire time that I've been on the bench has been Mike Gordon. And as well know, I've come over here before speaking passionately about treatment courts and about our problem-solving courts. And that would not have been able to occur without Michael Gordon as the chief Adult Probation Department. To really make a statement to the court system and then to the community in general that the way in which we supervise the individuals that are on probation and parole starts with humanity, starts with an understanding that they're an individual and not just a statistic and not just a case folder. And the way in which he has led that agency has been evidence for the full time that I has been there. Mike has made the decision to retire, and he deserves it. He has served this county long and well, and that, he really, to me, always embodied this concept, and we talk about county family. And I felt like he was part of our family, the way in which he conducted a very difficult department to supervise and the interactions with all of the interrelated agencies, including the Commissioner's Office in that. So, when I heard that he was leaving and there was a chance for brief remarks, I just wanted to be on record and say that we're losing a county, a family member that was near and dear to me, but was so important to so much for this county. So thank you for the opportunity, Madam Chair, and thank you. I know it's been a long afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you, Judge O'Neill. Yeah, and we certainly congratulate Mr. Gordon on his retirement and thank him for his many, many years of service, and so, thank you.
All right, and I will make my quick retreat because.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
All right. I will entertain a motion to adjourn the November 18, 2021 meeting of the Montgomery County Salary Board.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Aye. Commissioner Lawrence, second by Controller Sanchez. Any comments?
Yes.
All right. Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. Any negative votes? Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Oh, solicitors, this is like, oh.
Christmas past.